Ho gang still lean for no reason, my ho gang still lean like we need it. I use your bitches for head on the weekend, I smoke these hoes to holler like y'all mean. Boy so fucking broke, give a lot you got disease. I show you how to wipe a nigga nose like he sneezed. He-
(bell rings) (music playing) 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 Tell me if she still up? It's 5:00 AM and I'm drunk right now. Tell me can we still fuck? 101 I'm in the zone right now. Tell me am I still? Tell me you just how I feel right now. You say it's just a drug. And I know, I know, I know, I know, I know, I know. I lied to wait before, before, before I had you right this moment. Then again I can be drunk. Baby I don't wanna sound righteous, I got twenty bitches suckin' like diamonds. I just any money roll a dice since I pick. She ain't even really my type, been out here, she been losing herself to the night shift. She been losing herself and I get it. Oh girl yeah I get it, yeah. And you been fighting for your shot and you been searching for your spot. Girl I feel it, yeah, girl I feel it, yeah. But you think you got your boo, but you want someone like you. Tell me if she still up? It's 5:00 AM and I'm drunk right now. Tell me can we still fuck? 101 I'm in the zone right now. Tell me am I still? Tell me you just how I feel right now. You say it's just a drug. And I know, I know, I know, I know, I know, I know. I lied to wait before, before, before I had you right this moment. Can I make some money tonight? Then again I can be drunk. I know mommy, I know. Those two AM no stress. At three that bullshit kick in and thirty you feel your best. I turn my whole spot to crew shoot, screw shoot the way I left. But this is like a low, a low, just be the best. I'm looking at her rehearsing to turn into you. Now you starting to fuck up my mind as if you was her. We probably trapped in the burbs. At 29 that's my address, I guess you ain't heard. It's burning upstairs, it's elite. I do make it squeak, make it squeak. I make this shit beat. Don't have a teeth when I feast. Sleeping this lot through the streets, it takes a finesse. Especially this cabal they cheap. And you make it out the creek, you lead the ghetto. On the south door I'm a creep. Are you by the turell? The Nordic is dancing asleep. And are you obsessed by yourself? A minute from now, is this a room for me?
We not even finna talk about the simple fact that I woke up ten minutes after my alarm. Um, hey pretty babies, welcome, welcome back to my channel. It's your girl Mia. I'm sorry. Hey pretty babies, welcome, welcome back to my channel. It's your girl Mia Janae. If you're new to my channel, and if you're not new, welcome back to the channel. As y'all seen by the title today, I'm going to be doing something a little bit different. Basically, I'll be bringing you guys along with anything that I do within today's agenda. You guys are gonna come along for that. Make sure you guys like, comment, and subscribe to my channel if you are new to my channel. Follow me on Instagram at Mia Bay and TikTok at the same @. It's gonna be in the description box down below. So y'all make sure y'all connect with me because if I'm not posting on YouTube, I'm posting on TikTok and Instagram. It is 9:32. Your girl has class at 10 o'clock. So I just got done doing my hair, so. I have practice today at 6:45 for Stray L.A. A little life update. Your girl, she joined her first organization. It's been fifteen days since I've been on the Stray L.A. team. And so far, I really love it. It's a new journey. Yeah, like I said, I have class at 10, so I will go ahead and go to class. Um, here in a little bit. Normally, I'll go to the cafe after class, you know, maybe pick up a yogurt. Or if it's fried fish fry. Ooh, it's fried chicken Wednesday. We're definitely going to the cafe, y'all, after class because I'm giving you some chicken. And yeah, we just gonna go from there. Here's a quick outfit of the day. Shoes are from, where I get my shoes from? Shoes are from GOAT. Pants, don't remember. And I got my jacket from Blushmark. Alright, you guys, um, I just really want to talk about Stray L.A. a little bit more. It's like this modeling troupe. So your girl's a model now. I joined my first organization, Fresh Me Year. Y'all already know how I feel about, you know, challenging myself and doing new stuff. And get myself out there. Ain't gonna lie, I'm so hungry, but we don't have time to stop by the cafe like I would normally do. Because your girl wants to wake up late. (music playing) 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 I just wanna know if you're my friend. I just wanna know if you're pretending. I know I've been away. I'm just trying to get my pussy straight, girl. Don't give my shit away. I'm just trying to get my pussy straight. (music playing) 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 Don't mind us, waste time. I hold it up, eat all the time. Don't stop it, I hope we need that. You need me, please believe me. It's easy. You know I've been feeling, let me unleash my demons. Oh, yeah. What's the word? Tell me what you heard. Tell me what to do, just tell me when it hurts. Wanna get you to myself, as murder. What's the word? Tell me what you heard. Tell me what to do, just tell me when it hurts. Wanna get you to myself, as murder. What you mean, you and me, I here by myself. You around, she's around, it's people like Natalie Fau. You call it hopeless, not romantic. I ain't got no kids, so don't be so childish. I've been wildin', I've been wildin' too. And I like you, baby I look like you. Baby we ain't so different, baby I be trippin' too. What's the word? Tell me what you heard. Tell me what to do, just tell me when it hurts. Wanna get you to myself, as murder. What's the word? Tell me what you heard. Tell me what to do, just tell me when it hurts. Wanna get you to myself, as murder. (music playing) 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 I look like I'm in. I ain't, I wasn't gonna say nothing. But I was done like last week. Tell me where have you been? Where's my homeboy? Came out of nothing, girl. Don't act like I'm your man. I just wanted to put that one to the heart, this body. (music playing) 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 (laughing) Stanley, good break. This is some visionary shit. Been trying to feel pleasure with my eyes wide shut, but it keeps on moving. I blame it on the model bra with the Hollywood smile. Strip a booty with a rack like wow. Never forget ya, you put me on a field and I never had, never had, never had. And ever since I've been trying to get it back. You pick it up, put it back. Now I'm something like the chemistry on campus. But there's no drug around. I like what I found, you, you. I still can't fail my face. Turning in my work.
So, you got an idea for a business? Get that ass on, make that coochie free.
I'm young like I'm a man. But I was done like last week. Tell me where have you been? Came out of nothing, girl. Don't act like I'm your man. I'm just a fan. You don't hold me. No, 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 no. Oh, no. Fuck the world, I'm a walking erection. Speed without a thought, we do it reckless. Your nigga call us texting. You said, "Baby, don't be mad, you know how great it is." Tongue up in your mouth, you speak good to me. I ain't been lying. Fuckin' with a G. It's 'cause I fuck you, that don't mean I trust you, I don't. You got some high hopes. High hopes, baby. If I'm crazy, then I'll tell you about me. I was nothing at all. Took a trip to London just to hear how they talk. Back to 40, you should hear how they talk. He might be Mr. Jack and Phil, but I don't read through a mall. Yeah, that nigga played the fucking just to watch how we ball. I ain't never home for no, she pull up when I call. All the niggas who stuck me, strippers wanna sex me. You fucked them, then we mad because you had me low. Say fucked up, don't change it. Probably be dead if I was basic. You still give me head if I had patience. I would burn up. On our way to our study session. Yeah, I feel like we should, um, well, I feel like that's definitely smart to do this. Two days out the week, Sunday for reset day and Tuesday. Right? Tuesday is a good day.
You mad beautiful?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh my god, bro. Hey! Thank you. Look at them, they got some food in the cafe today. Cause I don't want it. Can I get a little bit more sausage, please? Thank you. (music playing) (music playing) (music playing) (music playing) (music playing) (music playing) Ay, yo. I need someone to be patient with me. Someone to get money when I take it from me. They don't even need to be as famous as me. I don't think I meet them at the places I be. But deep down I think about you all day, mommy. I know I'm a pit bull but I lay, mommy. I just wanna take you on a holiday, mommy. Say what's on your mind, I'ma call away, mommy. Come and rescue me. Take me out the club, take me out the trap. Take me off the market, take me off the map. I'm trying to hit the group chat and tell them it's a come and rescue me. Take me out the club, take me out the trap. Take me off the market, take me off the map. I'm trying to hit the group chat and tell them it's a map.
I didn't come this far just to come this far and not be happy. Okay. Remember that. You didn't come this far just to come this far? Yep. I saw it on the internet.
I don't really know how to confess my love. Really say like God, wanna test my love for you. Don't know how to express my love. That's why I'm American and spray. Yeah, my love for you. I need you, I love you. We have a party in less than four hours and we're getting our work done because what? We are responding to all the shit.
I wish I would've pulled that damn layout number. Said you put a mirror right on the mirror. First quarter, reflection just on the mirror. I saw, I was like my daddy right here. I saw what we're doing. Looking at my mirror, because his reflection was killing me. He had the mirror. Oh, he was looking at the mirror, he was looking at it. He was like, I think I'm hard to find. I even see, you have the editing right here. So you edit the reflection and you replace it with a different. In the background, saying, "You're an editor," I can say, "Yeah." I can, I can. I mean, I can use that. I mean, if I can make a lot of it, I'm gonna make it. I'm gonna make it. I'm gonna make it. I'm gonna make it.
I did look fine in here.
I saw that, that shit go hard.
How you saw that, on YouTube? Are you watching? Yes. Wow, that's funny. My shit really got my editing hard. My shit really got my editing hard. Jacket from Blushmark. Pants from Sheen. Shoes from Amazon. Shirt from Sheen, um.
Eck it, I can't remember. Shirt Forever 21.
Jacket probably Forever 21.
I got this off of TikTok, it's really good quality too. It's somebody's name who we're not gonna mention. And this is my initial, I got this off of Sheen. Um, pants, I ain't gonna lie, my roommate gave me these because she can't fit them no more. And dupies down here, they're from Sheen.
Alright, y'all, guys, see y'all in, um, in, um, in the basketball stadium. In the basketball stadium. (music playing) (music playing) (music playing) (music playing) (music playing) Hey, walk in front of me then. Why wasn't I in the video?
What video?
Your video, you was filming.
What video?
You said something about you against some female.
I ain't done that yet.
Oh, when is it?
I gotta set it big.
I might be there. You're in my blog now though.
Okay, alright. How y'all doing?
How y'all doing? Only on Instagram.
She ain't got to be one, man.
That nigga funny as fuck. He funny as fuck.
Make sure y'all subscribe to the channel.
Subscribe to my channel.
Subscribe to the channel.
Period.
From Alabama, number 10, Tizanias Goja. 25, 25 pounds, sophomore, Alabama. Number 4, Antoine Perkins. Standing 6'1" and 170 pounds, from Shreveport, Louisiana. Number 5, Drew Michael. T-Go! (music playing) 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 (music playing)
I didn't come this far just to come this far and not be happy. Okay. You didn't come this far just to come this far? I saw it on the internet.
I don't really know how to confess my love. Really say like God, wanna test my love for you. Don't know how to express my love. That's why I'm American and spray. Yeah, my love for you. I need you, I love you. Tell me what to do. Tell me what to do. (music playing)
Check that.
I'm like a football.
(music playing) 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 (music playing)
Poppy Brown. I go- (music playing) (music playing) Yeah.
(music playing) 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 Number 23, Ford. (music playing) 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 (music playing)
Everybody feels like the same, I always wanna be my little homie. They be camped out every time, they always talking like they know me. Pretty girls in the black trunks back then. Women in my weight, these back then. Heard me, made a real big purchase, her so big, had a trailer like a hurricane. Girl, that's real life. Show me what you got, girl, I'ma make it. Turn the light on, I ain't hiding. You know I'm big, like I'm eating peanuts, I'm trying to fight. Got the grill, got ice, got the feeling like my boy in his jeans, like, "Hey." Nobody watch, want me to bring on a side, coming, need a money, man.
My shoes off, I was.
No, you had teeny shoes on with me and you racing. After the game. Stop hooking at me, bitch. Guys, we're on our way to the CAF because we're hungry. We lost.
Sorry.
We suck.
Sorry.
Alright, good night. Alright, y'all, so. I just realized, don't mind my hair, but I just realized I'm out of laundry detergent. It's a good thing that we have like a little convenience store on campus, so that really does come in handy for the ones who don't have vehicles. So with that being said, I'm gonna go there first and then we're gonna do some laundry and then I'm gonna do some work. Don't mind my lashes, y'all. I had went on a Rampage last night and, um, ripped half my lashes off. Alright, you guys, so just made it back to my room from Chick-fil-A. Uh, I didn't get nothing but the eight-piece combo meal, medium size with a sundae. And yeah, so. I'm gonna go ahead and close out for today's video here. Make sure you like, comment, and subscribe to my channel if you haven't already. Follow me on TikTok and Instagram at Mia Bay. It's gonna be in the description box down below. And yeah, y'all, I'm finna eat, edit this video, and I'm finna go to bed. See y'all in another video. Bye, babies.
And ever since, I been trying to get it back. You pick it up, put it back. Now I'm something like the chemistry campers, but there's no drug around. I like what I found, you, you. I still can't feel my face. What am I smoking anyway? Say don't let the high go to waste. Can you taste it? Little taste it. Novocaine, baby, baby. Novocaine, baby, I want you. Fuck me good, fuck me long, fuck me long. Love me now when I'm gone, love me none, love me none, love me none. Nom, 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 nom. Novocaine, 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 novocaine. Love the pain, love the pain, love the pain, love the pain, love the pain. Novocaine, 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 novocaine. For the pain, for the pain. Novocaine, novocaine. Pretty girls involved with me, making pretty love to me, pretty. Pity, pity. All the pretty girls involved with me, making pretty love to me, pretty. Pity, pity. Oh, I can't feel a thing. Can't feel, can't feel a thing. Can't feel a thing. Can't feel, 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 feel it. I can't feel, feel it. Novocaine, novocaine, novocaine. I can't feel, feel it. Novocaine for the pain, for the pain. I can't, can't feel it. Feel it, feel it. Novocaine, novocaine, can't.